All right, I'd like to call up a regular board meeting of trustees for Clay Township to order. It's January 18th at 7:00 o'clock, 2021. Um, roll call, please.
Cindy Valentine, Palm Beach County, Brighton Beach, Florida. Ernie Bryson?
Here, Clay Township, Michigan.
Kristi Hilton?
Clay Township, Michigan, St. Clair County.
Maureen Bory?
She's connecting right now. Call her, call her again.
Maureen Bory?
Here.
I need your county, township, and state, please.
I'm in the county of McComb right now, Michigan.
Chesterfield Township.
Joanne Shirkey?
I'm here, I'm in Clay Township and St. Clair County, Michigan.
Chris Regan?
Here, Clay Township, St. Clair County, Michigan.
Mark Bouchard?
Here, St. Clair County, Clay Township, Michigan.
Okay, we're all here. Did we get everybody? I think so. Uh, bill's payable. I will entertain a motion.
Board, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the bill's payable this month, and $33,272.96.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Hilton?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Ernie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
A motion passed. Next, we have our supervisors' report. Um, I'd just like to say, as far as high water, we're pretty much maintaining the current level. Actually, I checked today, it's down a little bit. We're at 576.65. Um, and if it goes down another inch and a half, you know, I'm gonna actually cease the flood emergency. Um, so hopefully, we'll be able at those levels. Maybe we'll, we'll hit it, maybe not. Probably wait and make sure we, we hold that level for a month or so before we do that. And also, I mean, I talked to people up north. It doesn't appear that we have much of a snowpack up north, which is a benefit for us. I know the snowmobilers wish we, they had more snow up north, but, um, it's good news for us. As far as my COVID-19 report, we do have one person in our billing department that was exposed and is being quarantined right now. Result back. Um, there, if you haven't heard, there's a, a really nice grant available through the St. Clair County EDA Economic Development. Uh, and, and it's primarily for restaurants and other businesses that were shut down for the COVID. And it's a $15,000, $15,000 to $20,000 grant. And they, they did have some tutorials on how to fill it out. I think today was the first day you could apply, but you got a week or, or so to do it. If you have a business like that, you want to apply for this grant, and probably the sooner the better. Contact the St. Clair County EDA for that. And if you have problems getting in touch with them, get ahold of me, and I'll point you in the right direction. And also, there's an additional grant, not many people know about it, it's through the Michigan Restaurant and Lodging Association. And they're accepting, uh, applications, and it's up to $1,650. Uh, and it's basically for employees that are impacted by the restrictions of, that the governor's put in place. Um, and again, I, I really don't know all the particulars on that, but I can put, email you a link or get you in contact, but it's through the Michigan Restaurant and Lodging Uh, past two weeks, and spent a lot of time on our, our bike pass and getting quotes to finish, uh, the Bridge to Bay route, where we have gaps that they're, they're not filled. And, um, you know, in Clay Township. And also, we're looking at the Harsons Island Loop, uh, getting quotes for...
You know where the plug is? The plug, plug, the plug.
I'm gonna mute everybody. Um, but I'm, I'm getting quotes for that also. There's some private grant opportunities coming, coming available soon. And hopefully, as something that we can, uh, at some point in time, take advantage of. Also, start, uh, starting the planning process of the Harsons Island Nature Park. Uh, gonna start getting the information on costs, et cetera, and start to work on some grants to help us out there. Well, that, that park, it's gonna be probably a two to, two or three-phase project, but a first step is to get estimates on construction, and, uh, and we go to work to see if we can, how, how to fund it, and go from there. Uh, been on, doing, I'm, ongoing talks with garbage companies. Um, our contracts up at, I, I think it's the end of March, you know, end of April in there, but I want to get that set up in, uh, in February sometime. Uh, let's see. And oh yeah, we, we have a potential lawsuit. We've been spending time on, on the extension of the Colony Water Main Project. Uh, there's been some movement on that today, too, and, uh, I've been spending a lot of time with that, and hopefully, we can get that resolved. Um, a lot of blight and building issues, as always. And we, we are having a preliminary meeting with OHM on our sewer interceptor issue. I'm gonna meet with the IRA supervisor and head of their wire department, Don DeBoyer, myself, and OHM. And, uh, we're meeting February 2nd. And once, after that meeting, we're gonna set up a joint meeting with IRA Township Board, Clay Township Board, with OHM to review, go through our options, and, uh, and report on that. I, I figured, instead of going back and forth, we'll just have one joint meeting together, where we can resolve, uh, resolve the issues and put an action plan together going forward. And, uh, well, Anthony, he, he's on today, too. We've been working pretty, pretty good with the SAW grant, um, also. And, uh, as you recall, Board, we had a emergency sewer issue last week, and I'm happy to report that, that was, the fix went well. Uh, we were able to remove the piece of wood and fix it internally with a sleeve. It was challenging, for sure, but it was very non-invasive. I mean, our alternative would be to run a big excavator, bring it in, and dig down by seven, eight feet, and, uh, repair it from the outside, and it, it would've been ugly. But, uh, the repair went well, and once I get a little bit of video of it, I'll shoot it off to the Board. So that's all I have on the supervisors' report. All right. Next, we have public comments. Do I have any public comments? Some of you are muted. Harold?
Yeah, my name is Harold Bane. I live at 757 North Channel on Harsons Island. And, uh, I'd like to ask the trustees, did you get the email that I sent you? And is there any questions?
I didn't.
It wasn't sent to you?
I'm a trustee.
Can you hear me? Are you able to hear me?
No. I read it. I have no questions. Thank you.
Hmm?
Yeah. I read it as well, Harold.
Okay.
I read it, too, Harold.
All right.
I did receive your email, and I do have questions, especially after speaking with our township supervisor this morning. Mr. Bryson told me that he will definitely not be recommending women because of the way you have behaved, possibly as if you were above the law. And as a new member of the Board, it seems very important choosing and voting for the best candidates who are honest and hardworking. This planning commission deserves the community, and I, I really need all of the facts, Harold. So, and, and Artie, I believe the public deserves to know what has transpired, as to why you're not willing to reappoint Harold Bane, Artie.
This is public comments? This isn't question?
I, I'd like to, I'd like just to, you to let the public know, if that's okay with Mr. Bane, what you told me this morning.
Um, I can do that.
He asked me if I had any questions, so that's why I have to say.
Right. Well, it, it's public comments. I mean, how it works is people get to make a public comment, uh, three minutes, but I'm, I'm sure we can discuss this when it comes up on the agenda later.
But then, he would not be able to speak, will he, at that time?
If he wants to be recognized, we could probably do that.
All right, 'cause I'm, I just want him to be able to, after receiving that letter, I want him to be able to reply to what you told me.
Okay. This is, all right. Do I have?
He can read it now, can't he?
If you want. So, I mean, I, I did not receive it, and, uh, I'm not sure who did and who didn't.
I just wanted to know, you know, if Artie could say what he told me this morning, so that Harold could reply to all of it, 'cause, you know, that's important.
We can, we can do this under the, when it comes up in the, on the agenda.
Okay.
This is public comments.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, is there any other public comments?
I have one as well.
Chris?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I just also wanted to verify that everybody on the township board received my email with attachments.
We did. I did.
Okay. Okay. Chris Holcomb, Harsons Island, Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. Uh, as you all know, the Planning Commission consists of nine members, each of us bringing different opinions, experience, knowledge, and backgrounds to that Board. I believe that's one of the reasons why we work so well together. I can attest to the fact that when a vote is conducted by that commission, it is done by each commissioner independently. After a thorough discussion and debate on the issues before us, we are not influenced or threatened by one another or anyone else to make decisions or cast votes by any other means or by any one individual, other than based on what the rules, regulations, laws, and ordinances of this township and state direct us to do. Are individuals always happy with the outcome of their requests? Of course not. Is it because the Planning Commission isn't doing their job correctly? Absolutely not, just the opposite. The decisions of the Planning Commission aren't based on if someone doesn't get everything they're asking for, they're not gonna be happy. They aren't based on promises someone else may, have made to them before they came to the Planning Commission, nor are they based on making decisions without having all of the requirements of the building department and the specific ordinance it falls under being met. Ordinances aren't just changed on a whim. There is information gathered, public hearings that are scheduled and conducted, gathering of information, and development of language reflecting a compilation of all of this in amending an ordinance or issuing an approval to a site plan or a special land use approval. This planning commission, with the assistance of the township planners, take every part of their job very seriously, and strive to get it right the first time, even though it might take a little longer. This planning com- commission works incredibly hard, and the year-end summaries provided to this Board should be a reflection of that. A brief summary related to the issues and concerns brought to my attention was previously forwarded to this Board. I sincerely hope it has been given your utmost attention. Work, excuse me, the work and the decisions of a Board are a reflection on every member of that Board, not just one or two members, all. So when there are statements, accusations, or concerns made, they are a reflection on the whole Board. When these statements and accusations and concerns are made, why then are they not addressed with the Board they affect, or the individual member they are specifically being made against? To conduct business without this transparency and honesty is nothing more than inflammatory, hypocritical, deceitful, and suspicious. I believe that this Board has been misinformed, and in some respects, is being led to conclusions and decisions based on ulterior agendas. The way that this situation has and continues to unfold and be handled speaks volumes as to the lack of full transparency by this, by into this Board, and is appalling, shameful, disrespectful to those being affected by their actions, and specifically, to the citizens of Clay Township. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Donna, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Oh, I do?
Oh, you, you just?
I do, okay. Um, well, I would like first, to the trustees, um, well, should I state where I'm at, or my address for records?
Yes, please.
Okay. I am speaking from Las Vegas, Nevada, right now.
Lucky you.
I, I know. My residency is 898 North Channel, Harsons Island, though. So, um, first, to the trustees, while it is no secret that many of you are related to Board members, our neighbors, and friends, um, there's way too much nepotism in this township, not just in this forum today, but also in the departments within the township, the building, parks, and rec, et cetera. Please remember why you all agreed to take your positions, to serve and represent your community's citizens, not your supervisor's agenda or his conflicts of interest with the other commissions, commissioners, or departments within our township. It has become very rare to hear any oppositions or discussions at these meetings, and that really troubles me. It appears as though what Artie wants, Artie gets, and that is not democracy with checks and balances, or representation. Artie, I know you never answered my question as to why Kathy Schweikart and Harold Bane are not being, are being removed from the Planning Commission, when they both clearly want to keep their positions. Because if you have conflicts with them, well, you should not be working with them in micromanaging departments within our township. Commissions and departments, they have seminars and training. These people take the time to attend and educate themselves on the laws and the procedures within their departments. I have heard that as your reasons for hiring so many retired police officers and retired firemen, rather than paying for courses, basically, they become educated. They come to you educated. Well, Kathy and Harold bring a lot of knowledge and experience to the table, yet you want to replace them with people that know nothing about planning, codes, or ordinances in the final stages of our township's master plan. A master plan that should've been made eight years, and is long overdue. And I do hope to hear discussions and questions from our elected trustees on this topic in this meeting, that you vote to reinstate the two qualified people, Kathy and Harold. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? It's hard. Kathy, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Schweikart. My address is 5615 Green Drive. I am the newly elected, as of December 2020, chairperson of the Planning Commission at the moment. I guess I would ask the same question as Harold did, if, um, the Board of Trustees are in receipt of my two emails that I sent, I believe it was yesterday. I'll ask that question first.
Yes, I did receive it, and same as Harold, I have questions for you, but I want her to be able to discuss later, Artie.
Okay.
May I ask when that discussion is gonna happen on this agenda?
Well, the first thing under new business is, is planning commission appointment of Debbie Addy. It'll probably be under there.
I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, seven, you know, it goes up to 7D. I'm gonna make a motion, 7E, that we discuss, you know, both you and Harold, and allow you to talk, when it comes time for that.
All right. I obviously submitted rather lengthy chronology, and I'm sorry it took so long, but there was a lot to be said. I, um, will wait, I guess, until that particular point. I thank Christine for, um, clarifying and helping us with the chronology that she submitted to the Board of Trustees, and hopefully, that will enlighten everybody on what planning commission does. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? Any other public comments? We have Reed Freeman, Ray Cook, Debbie Addy, iPad, Christine, Sandy K., Carol Sampson, Gail's iPad, Whitey. Any other public comments? All right. Hearing none, seeing none. Move right along to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
To approve the consent, consent agenda, consisting of the minutes of the prior board meetings, um, and the, uh, Board approval of in-between meetings, payroll reports, payroll reports, and the check reports.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented? Signify by saying aye.
Roll call. Roll call, please.
You wanna do a roll call? Okay, roll call on the consent agenda.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Ernie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine? Yes. Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have the Fire Chiefs Report. George, are you on?
Yep. Fire Chiefs Report for December. Engine three was taken out of, removed out of service. Uh, the equipment was taken off. Uh, we had some issues with the cracked cylinder head, so we took it out of service and removed all the equipment off of it. Uh, we assisted in putting some Christmas lights up in the Clay Township Park, and we hired four new employees. Uh, they're doing very well. Uh, we assisted with the Clay Town, or we assisted with the Goodfellows, uh, this Christmas. We assisted at a pub and pantry at Alvin Air Fire Department, and Fire Boat One was pulled out of service for the year. So, uh, it's, uh, be ready for, to launch in the spring. And, uh, the subject tank, uh, on the island's fire department is being installed tomorrow. All the permits were pulled for that, so, uh, we're all ready for that.
Okay, and that's gonna be done, uh, probably late, uh, next couple days, George, is that right?
Yep, it should be. Hopefully, it'll be done tomorrow afternoon, if that'll go into, uh, Wednesday, but we'll be done this week.
Okay, so any Board members have any questions for George? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, uh, let's see. We have new business, planning commission appointment. And as you can see, I recommended that we, uh, appoint Debbie Addy to the planning commission, and, uh, he would, she would be replacing Harold Bane, whose term is up. Not removing him, uh, we're just not replacing him. And, I mean, I'd like to say, I'm, I'm looking to infuse some new blood in the, in the planning commission. Um, and whenever I, we, I look to appoint anybody, I'm looking for bright, well-educated people. Um, it's wise to put, surround yourself with the best people you can, smart people, and that's what I feel like I'm doing with Debbie Addy. So, um, that being said, I'm, I'm going to recommend to the Board that we appoint Debbie Addy to the planning commission. It is, uh, the Board can either accept it or refuse the recommendation.
Aren't we going to discuss it first? I want to make a motion.
Well, you make a motion to accept, to, to approve it, then we open it up to discussion.
I want to make a motion to add something to, to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda is over with, it's been approved and, and it's done with. Uh, we're under new business now.
I mean, the new business agenda, I want to make a motion to add an item to the new business agenda before we vote on Debbie Addy.
Well...
I'd like to make, let me kind of clarify this.
Thank you.
Make a motion to accept Debbie Addy to the position on the, on the planning commission.
Support.
All right, we have motion and support. I'll open it up for discussion now. Um, like I said before, I recommend Debbie Addy. She's been on our Board of Review, and on the ZBA. She's got lots of experience. She's very detail-oriented, does her research. She's proven to act in the best interests of the township, and I very much trust her, her judgment, her professional career. Uh, she's been administrator and a project manager for a large construction company, as well versed in plans and understanding developments. Um, that, that's, that's why I'm recommending her to serve in, in the planning commission. So is there any other discussion?
Well, I have a lot of discussion that I want to talk about.
Okay, now's when we do it.
Okay, well, first of all, I, um, you know, I talked about the conversation that you and I had this morning. It was regarding Mr. Harold Bane and Ms. Kathy Schweikart. Um, as a member of the Board, I'm committed to voting for the best candidates on the planning commission. And after speaking to you, Mr. Bryson, you told me, you had several concerns with Mr. Bane and also with Kathy Schweikart. So I think we need to address those before we can move on to decide on Debbie Addy or not, and is now the time that we can speak with Harold Bane and with Kathy Schweikart about, you know, the conversation I had with you? Can we discuss that now?
Well, yeah, I mean, basically, what, what I told you and, and everything is, I, I'm, I have a problem with, um, appointing Harold, because he's showing, he's, he's, he's circumvented the process of, uh, of getting building permits, um, and, and kind of sidestepped it using his position, uh, to benefit himself. So I, I have a problem of, uh, appointing anybody to a Board that would do that.
And was that on his coffee shop, the, that you're speaking of?
Yes.
That you told me about, his coffee shop?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, so, I mean, I remember you telling me that he didn't pull permits for electrical. Is it okay if I discuss this, Harold and Artie? What you told?
Sure.
It's okay with Harold? Okay.
Sure, it's okay.
All right.
Well, I, this is, this is what, what I was told.
Okay, I'm ready for it.
Because I think, I think Harold should have a right to defend himself.
Okay, fine. But let me, I was told by the billing department, a year and a half ago, that we told him that he has to go to the planning commission.
Yeah.
And, um, we, we were told that, and this is all hearsay, because, I mean, Harold doesn't talk to me about it. I, you know, and this is feedback I'm getting from the planning commission. Um, really?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. So I just wanted...
Will you let me speak?
Go ahead.
And, um, that he has to go to the planning commission. Uh, he basically told the, uh, building department staff that he called Rod, our planner, and he, he, Rod said, he doesn't have to go before the planning commission. Um, we sent an email, I said, we, the billing department sent an email to Rod, "Look, we have a change of use. It was a hardware store, now they want to open up a coffee shop." Okay. Rod replied... And Rod replied, yes, he has to go to the planning commission. When, I, I assume, because he never applied for one permit, I assume that once he heard that I wasn't going to reappoint him for not pulling permits, that he called to get a plumbing permit. Which he had a professional plumber doing, going in there. And we went, or the plumber, or the, our inspector went and passed the plumbing permit.
Okay.
The, the, the inspector said that he saw that there's more work that was being done in there. And we have no record of any permits being pulled. We were told he put a new furnace in without a mechanical or electrical permit. We're, we're, I, I was told that there might have been walls moved around. We're not sure because there was no permits pulled and, and no inspections done. There might have been electrical work done, but no, like again, there is no permits pulled. And we're also copied on letters from the St. Clair County Health Department saying that a coffee shop is a far stretch because that septic field will only handle 100 gallons a day fluids. And Clay Township is not to give them occupancy until the inspect, until he passes until he passes the county health department and regulations. Then our, our billing, you know, and there's other issues with the property. But just to the fact that he, he tried to circumvent and, and did not come to the billing department and say, hey, I need a billing permit. He calls our planner directly to get opinions from him. I, I have a serious problem with that.
When do I get to talk?
Is it my turn to talk now?
Uh, we'll, we'll let Harold talk.
I'd like to ask you a few questions first. So that seems to be a real comprehensive recap of our conversation this morning. And it really caused me some deep concern. And I, you know, I got information from Harold showing the contrary on some of these things. So I want to ask Harold to respond to, you know, what your accusations are. And who did he buy the building from and when? And what condition was the building in when you bought it, Harold? I'd like to know all of these things. Who, who did you buy it from and everything like that?
Okay, I certainly will, but I have.
Mark wanted to talk too. Do you want Mark to talk first before you answer?
Yes, Mark, please talk.
Can you unmute Mark?
Keep going.
Go ahead.
Okay, Artie's wrong on the health department permit because I, I contacted them on 2019. And this, they sent me a letter, here it is. St. Clair Health, St. Clair County Health Department, there it is, see what I, right there? It says, "This operation..."
He's muted.
Who is?
Oh, Harold was muted for a minute. You hit mute button, Harold. This operation what?
This letter is to confirm our conversation regarding the sewage disposal system above the dimension address as a sanitarium. It is followed. "It has one 500 gallon septic tank, 150 square foot bed located on the west side of the building. This building is proposed to change use of the hardware store to take out coffee shop. This operation will only have access to the bathroom for employees and will not have any sit-down dining at all." It's approved by the health department.
Okay, well, we're, we're good if it.
It's, you know what, you know what, no, 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 hold on. Then you tell me I didn't go to the planning commission. I have a letter right here. 7/9/2020, when I went to the planning commission. I'm on the agenda. So I, 22nd, 2020. Then, then I get, it's like, all of a sudden it says, okay, you're on the planning commission. I talked to Kathy Schweickert and everything. And yes, I called Rod because everybody else calls Rod. The blue horseshoe called Rod. Everybody calls Rod. Then, uh, let me see. August 22nd, 2020, the planning commission agenda. 3062 South Channel reuse occupancy permit is no longer listed, indicating that the issue is no longer listing as a pending product. Here, project, here. This is right from your office. The description of work of permit PP 2020-7, I mean, 0076 was an issue 10/14/2020 for a commercial coffee shop. You're telling me I didn't go through the planning commission? Are you kidding me?
What condition was the building in, Harold?
I bought the building off of Bob and Sue Bryson. The building was in 19, wait a minute, 2016, it was remodeled. That's what it was, remodeled in 2016. And I'm sitting here looking at all these things that, you know, you're accusing me of, all right? It says here, they pulled a permit on 2, on 6, 16. The front windows and the doors in a commercial building, never inspected. Work description of the permit issued, electric upgrade for the furnace, never inspected. Work description of permit for issue, mechanical upgrade furnace and ductwork, never inspected. You're accusing me of this stuff? I wouldn't pull the permit for the plumbing. I wouldn't did everything that I'm supposed to do. I wouldn't pull the permit for the, for the furnace and the electrical. It was told I couldn't. Okay, so I, I got a call to Gary at White CD, and he's going to pull the permit for that. Yeah, I don't know, Artie, I don't know if you realize that when you go on to change, you say I did a change of use. It's a C2. I can sell food, I can sell gifts. It's just about anything in there, a C1 and C2.
It's a change of use.
No, it is not!
A hardware store, I'm sorry, a hardware store to a coffee shop.
Right.
That is a change of use.
He had coffee there, Artie. She placed it right over there. She has a kitchen. Oh, and by the way, there's a new 100 amp electrical panel that I didn't put in that she never even got inspected. How did that go?
I don't know.
And you know what, come to that, when Kelly came and inspected me, he asked me, who put the toilet and the sink in? I go, I don't know, it was here. You know what it shows on my, my thing here? For plumbing, zero fixtures, zero sink. And it says for my outlet, a few, there's more than a few. And it says for my fixtures, there's 46 different lights changed in that building. And you know what? I don't see a certificate of occupancy in here because it changed owner and hands. So you're accusing me of this and your own family didn't even do it. You sit there and laugh. I think this is a travesty. You're telling me that I didn't go front? It was my wife that went in front of the planning commission. You know what? I don't know what to say. You sit here and tell everybody these stories that I'm not pulling permits. I think I'm the only one pulling the permits and getting inspections.
I'm just getting.
How does this building, how does this building operate as anything with nobody inspecting it?
I'm, I'm just getting the information I've gotten from the billing department.
Yeah, well, you know what? Cindy Babbage is the one that told me about this. You're Cindy Babbage is the one that didn't tell me I had a permit. I didn't even know I had a permit until I looked at this and I go, oh, I do have a permit. Because I was never informed. I think your billing department really needs to get its act together.
This is the reason that you're not going to offer him up for reappointment. And that, to me, is upsetting to make these accusations when Harold's saying they're not true.
Maureen, I, I believe that I have a better candidate than Harold for the appointment. So that is why, that is, it's my job to do what's best for the township.
But it's also not your job to debate me.
Also, also everybody else's job on the, the, on our, our board. I feel that Debbie Addy is going to be a much stronger candidate for planning commission.
And you know what, Artie?
That's why. You're, you're on a order right now.
You're out of order by defending my family and me.
So.
Well, I mean, the public seem to, uh, I have a lot of documentation here that the public seem to feel that we're very fortunate to have Harold Bain and Kathy Schweickert. And I would like to read all these comments, but I won't do that until after we talk to Kathy. Because you also, you know, after speaking to you, you for me, there's been complaints and situations that were not handled correctly. And with Kathy's permission, could you please repeat those concerns that you shared with me this morning regarding her appointment, reappointment? Unless, you know, you're planning to reappoint her, I don't know.
Well, I, I haven't made that decision yet, if I am or not. We had a conversation. And I'd like to have other conversations with her as, before I'm prepared to either reappoint her or, or put somebody else on.
Okay, well, again, since we are in doing this right now, the concerns that you've shared with me, with her, about her this morning, I believe the public deserves to know what has transpired. And then she should have a chance to reply. And it seems like, you know, we should know something today because she'll be serving again on a meeting before we meet again. And I don't think it's right that they continue to serve if you're not planning to reappoint them when their term is already expired.
How it works by state statute, she'll remain in office until she either gets reappointed or someone else gets reappointed.
So at any point of anybody's term, they can be eliminated?
No.
Well, it sounds like if they continue to serve.
Her term is over.
They continue to serve after their reappointment.
Her, her term is over.
Her term is up, then it seems like it can happen at any time. You could let this go on for weeks or months. But, so let's talk, can you tell, you tell the public and Kathy, what you told me today about what you're concerned about with her?
Supervisor Bryson.
Yes, thank you, Cindy.
Agenda, please.
Yep, this is, we're, we're considering Debbie Addy right now. And that's what's on the floor. The concerns about Kathy Schweickert as chair, chairperson on it, it, it isn't really up for debate right now.
Can I ask though, when it's going to be? Because I asked at the beginning during public comments.
She wasn't able to make public comments and you said she would be able to speak. So I think we need to let her speak.
And she's speaking. I'm not sure, uh, yet. Kathy, I don't have an answer for you yet. Like I say, I, I have some further.
Can I, can I, can I add to Harold's two cents worth of what happened to him? Because he did come before the planning commission.
Okay, well. Okay, I was told that he did, but go ahead.
He came before the planning commission twice. The second time I personally realized that he wasn't on, he didn't appear on the agenda. I called the building department and asked what happened to Harold. Quote unquote, "We are going to handle this internally," end quote. Last I heard anything. I don't micromanage the building department, but that's your building department with the personnel that's in there that's been hired by you, Board of Trustees members, including your supervisor. I am willing to take blame for things, but not this. Absolutely, positively not that. Harold did not at all circumvent anything that I am aware of. And I would really, really think if that were the case, there's a board of nine of us. I don't think there's anybody on my, this board of planning commissioners that wouldn't say, hey, wait a minute, Harold, what did you do? Or didn't do? So, and really, the documents originate with the township. The documents originate with the building department. Any person on the board, any person in our community can go to the building department and verify what I'm saying. You don't have to believe me, you don't have to believe Harold. And that goes for a lot more things that are going to be said to here too. You don't have to believe me and my chronology events. But I substantiated, along with Christine's help, to have documentation, not just he said, she said type issue. I firmly believe in making sure I do what I'm doing is right. I firmly believe if Harold had done something wrong, I would have brought it to his attention. I'm sure our planners would, and I'm sure the building department would. But the last communication was, we are going to handle this internally. I would suggest you reach out to your building department and see what's going on internally.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have a comment as well. Artie, as the board representative on the planning commission, I sat on the board as Harold and his wife presented that on the site plan. And I have, I really don't, I'm unaware of any of the accusations that you just described about him. None whatsoever. I'm stonewalled. I'm, I'm in shock, tell you the truth.
Well, how, how come I'm just hearing about it for the first time right now? Mark, when I, I told you about it a week or two ago.
Probably because he was trying to get the facts straight because there's been so much accusation about Harold's ability to be on this board. My ability to be on this board. If you want to surround yourself with new blood, as you just said, you could have said that to either one of us. If you want to surround yourself with quote unquote intelligent people, I'm finding that a little offensive at this particular point because you're supposed to take a cross-section of your whole community, nine people, to represent the whole community at large. Not just what the supervisors thinking is, has to be done. And the Board of Trustees, Mr. Bryson's correct. He can make nominations all the time. It's up to you to actually put them in office, but you need to ask some questions. You can turn down every single nomination he brings in front of you. That's the way it works. And I'm very well aware of it and I respect that process. But to be leveling accusations against Harold and I, especially when they're not true, especially when I have spent so much time and energy along with Christine helping because it was beyond my ability to put this all together since January 13th, after Artie and I had a Zoom meeting. And these allegations came to my, to the forefront. I am sorry, I deny pages of documentation of a chronology because I feel very strongly that the accusations he's making are just unfounded. I don't know where he's coming from. Chuck the minutes, ask anybody else. But this is just utterly ridiculous at this point. It's offensive, it's embarrassing, and I don't understand why we're doing this. There's other ways to handle it if you wanted to do something. And Mr. Graytop, I spoke with him in the summertime. I also understand Mr. Graytop, stand up man. He decided he withdrew his name because he had no clue that he was replacing people.
I beg to differ, but.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bryson. Excuse me, Mr. Bryson, what did you just say?
So I beg to differ, but that's okay.
Mr. Graytop stated that at the meeting.
He stated that at your last board meeting, that's recorded. Or actually, I think it's summer board meeting that was recorded.
I know.
You don't have to believe me, it's a recorded meeting.
I know that, but I still beg to differ.
Well, you can beg to differ, that's fine. You can go right ahead and do it, but it's not founded in anything. It's your opinion and your intention.
I need to make some board comments that the public have brought to my attention that I'm not sure that everyone on the board has received emails or seen this on social media. But personally, I mean, getting dedicated and committed people to serve on commissions is challenging, okay, at the least. We're very fortunate to have two very experienced and qualified people on our commission. The way that these reappointments are being handled by our township supervisor Artie from the beginning, they give me much discomfort.
Is, is this you talking, Maureen, or I'm?
I wrote this.
Okay, I'm confused.
I spent three hours this afternoon because I need the board to hear my feelings about.
Okay, I'm confused. I just want to clarify because you said on social media, I wasn't sure.
I'm going to bring that up in here.
Okay.
As, as, I am not allowed to interrupt you, I prefer.
No, I just wanted to clarify if this was you or somebody, or someone else's words.
You're going to hear it in here. So, these are just like some of my feelings and then I'm also going to give the public's feelings. So I, from what I understand, Kathy Schweickert's term ended on 11/15 of 20 and Harold's on 11/20 of 20. They both did not receive correspondence asking if they wished to remain on the board, which as I understand, that's a normal practice. However, they both did send emails to you, Artie, on December 1st and December 2nd requesting to be reappointed to the commission. You did not respond, Artie, and they were not told that they were to be replaced. On the contrary, they were allowed to attend and run the planning commission meeting on December 9th, 2020. At this meeting, an election of officers was also considered. It resulted in Kathy Schweickert being the chairperson, Christine Holcomb, the vice-chairing Whitey Simon secretary. It seems to me that they are still serving and discussing such important things as electing officers after their terms have expired, that this could be some sort of violation or at the very least, taking advantage of their service and their dedication. Number two, I'm concerned. Number two, I'm concerned that they were not brought in by you, Artie Bryson, and told that they were not to be reappointed. Instead, it was discussed at a township meeting. And I believe they found out when they looked at the agenda for that meeting on December twenty first. Seems they were blindsided. As well as myself and the members of the board. Um, that meeting on December twenty first was uncomfortable for me, and it seemed as though something wasn't right. You know, and you're asking, Mark, why didn't we talk about this before? It's because we're just being brought into the light less than a month ago. Okay, number three. At the December twenty first meeting, it seemed that the people you want to appoint had no knowledge. But there was not an opening that was the current members still wish to serve. In fact, as as Kathy stated, Bill Graytop said. That Artie did not explain that there was an opening, and he withdrew for consideration. Because he did not know. At this meeting, transparency was promoted as essential and paramount. I'm not seeing transparency in the handling of this appointment of new people on the planning commission, okay? That's three. Four, during the meeting on December twenty first, Mr. Bryson, you assured Kathy and Harold that they you'd be contacting them personally. To discuss this. However, two weeks later at the January fourth meeting, you stated that you had not had time to do so. You did not contact them until January thirteenth. Per the emails that they sent to me. That's that's a big gap of time. To leave them, you know, flailing. Number five, after my conversation with you this morning, Artie, it seemed you had really valid points as to not appoint these, not reappointing these individuals. I then I read the emails that they had sent me, which was just yesterday, Kathy and Harold Bain. In defense of Mr. Bryson's accusations, and I find that they have substantial proof. To make me question. Your reasons to remove them, Marty. Because you they don't, it doesn't seem valid, okay? Number six, as a servant of the people, I feel compelled to share what I have seen from the people of Clay Township. Many citizens have expressed their support to keep the planning commission intact. Including Donna. Hala Koglu, I don't know if I'm saying that right, she spoke earlier. She writes this on next door, pay attention, citizens of Clay Township. Our township supervisor has been strongly trying to dismiss and replace. Two of the township planning commissioners without giving any required written changes or reasons. What is the conflict of interest between our supervisor and Kathy Schweickert? Fifteen years as a chairperson and Harold Bain over three years on the planning commission. This is so close to the final approval of our township's master plan. Transparency, please, she writes in all caps. I urge all to take time to listen to the public comments, December twenty first, January fourth. Especially Chris Holcomb, one of the planning commission chairpersons, she makes very strong statements, asking questions. And requesting both to be reappointed. Why are these two honest and hardworking citizens not being reappointed? Thank you, Mark Borchardt, for being the only trustee to ask questions. What are the written charges? What's the conflict of interest? Both Kathy and Harold have spoken at the last two meetings. They clearly want to keep their positions. And then she urges us, Clay Township trustees, you are voted in by the people to represent them, not the supervisors. Conflict of interest, you all should be asking more quis- more questions, and then she tells the system of Clay Township, you know, to get involved. Um, please get involved in with all that's happening and not happening in your community, so. Then people respond to it, right? So Bob has derek states that Kathy and Harold should stay in their position, they've been doing a great job. Estelle Whalerzak, and I'm sorry if I'm saying your names wrong, citizens, I'm doing my best. She stated that maybe they ignored ordinances and improved plans allowing land. Uh, builds higher on builds causing flood damage. Donna then replies to her. That she should not be so quick to judge, maybe it's the opposite, and they're trying to uphold the ordinances. Jackie Byer states that she is happy with Carol and Harold's commitment to the community. Kelly Nader stated she doesn't agree with the changes that, you know, we're trying to remake it at this time. But our supervisor is acting within his rights. She also states that she's hopeful any new planning commissioner would be required to recuse themselves. So like Debbie Addy, if she was voted in, would have to re. Use herself from voting on the master plan because it's in its final stage. Joan Emmerich stated that Kathy and Harold are two hardworking individuals. I also re- received emails, of course, from Chris Holcomb, which, you know, the vice chairperson on the planning commission. She delivered a very detailed summary summary relating to all the issues and concerns that you mentioned, Artie. And it seems there's been no wrongdoing. She provided a lot of documentation that. I mean, she went through a lot of work to send us that. I got another email from Ann Merle. Stating that as our representative for the voters of Clay Township. She would like us to know that along with others, they have concerns about the actions of not reappointing. Both Kathy Schweickert and Harold Bain, she is looking for a better understanding about why the board would consider taking such actions. And wants me to reply. Another email from Carol Karen Nerans. She would like to express her concern about the reappointment of Kathy and Harold to the planning. As she understands that they both wish to return, but may may not be able to because of a new person being appointed. Uh, she states that they have just finished the master plan and their thanks for all this hard work is a goodbye. She asks if anyone has contacted the fellow planning commissioners as they have worked with these people. And will need to work with someone new if they are not reappointed. He asks me to take the time to get input from the other people on the planning commission. So I reached out to all of them. And I apologize, it was somewhat last minute because I only got Karen's email last night around seven thirty. But this is what I heard back from everyone that was able to contact me today. Robert Muesling, representative on the planning commission, stated that he feels they are both great assets. And wishes to continue to work with them. He states that he has experience from sitting on the other side of the planning commission. And applying that they do a great job. You know, he he sat applying for for things, and so he knows both ends of it. Um, I spoke with Mark Borchard, representative on the planning commission, stated that he is in disagreement with non-reappointment. Whitey Simon, who's the secretary on the planning commission, stated that he has been on the commission for many years. Served under three different chairpersons. And Kathy has been serving for fifteen years, they worked tremendously well as a cohesive group. Whitey states that Kathy brings experience, has many contacts with the legal community. Helping to be as careful as possible, keeping everything legal. He states that her husband is a builder and that's helpful. Whitey explains that as the cohesive group. They are able to ask questions of builders who come before them to support ordinances and do their duties. He also explains many citizens do not understand that the planning commission is not an enforcement agency. The building department enforcement officers are responsible for that job. And Whitey explains that the planning commission is not involved in every plan, mostly if there's difficulties getting a site plan approved or brought in. Okay, Keith Bell, representative on the planning commission for about five years. Stated that he has not had any negative dealings. Um, with Harold or Kathy, he believes they do a great job for the township. He mentions that Harold gladly stepped up and replaced Keith, taking his place as the planning commission rep for the ZBA. So Harold took on extra responsibility. Keith was thankful for Harold's volunteering to serve. As Keith's day job became more demanding. Chris Heltonin, representative on the. Bonded stated that because he is so new, only serving since May. That he cannot give any opinion at this point due to not having enough history or time served. But he is still feeling his way around and happy to serve with anyone. Chris Holcomb, the vice chair on the planning commission, again, took the time to send that very detailed account. To defend the com- defend the complaints and concerns that we have, Artie. So we did not speak, but I'm assuming she's in favor. You know, that's hearsay, but. So after much careful consideration and listening to the people. I believe it would not be in the community's best interests to replace Kathy Schweickert or Harold Bain. On the Clay Township Planning Commission. So in conclusion, Artie. I'm asking you to reconsider your position and reappoint both Kathy Schweickert and Harold Bain. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Does, uh, do we want to hear open up discussion, any other board members? Do we have any other comments for board members? We have a motion and support on the floor right now. Any other board members?
Are you taking comments on Debbie Debbie Addy or Harold? No, just Debbie Addy?
Yeah, we have a motion for to uh. Or to approve my recommendation for Debbie Addy on the planning commission.
Okay, I don't have a comment.
Okay.
I don't have any disrespect for Debbie Addy, I'm sure she's very qualified. But I know these people are very dedicated and the public seems to want to keep them intact.
Okay.
And I think it's important that the board knows that.
Okay, does any board members have any other questions?
How about a board member whose name was mentioned during the previous discussion?
Whitey, this this is the Clay Township trustees.
I know what it is. I know what it is, Mr. Bryson.
Okay.
I also know that I am insulted. By the insinuations against Ms. Schweickert and every planning commission member. Who has been sitting on that commission as not being intelligent enough. And having caused problems between applicants and you and the building department. I object to that strenuously, and I heard somebody talking about hearsay. You admitted that you were acting against Mr. Bain based on hearsay. Hear say that you could not substantiate. You have done that in other cases that I am familiar with and will not point out now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Whitey spoke briefly. A big sigh from us.
Whoever's talking, you're out of order.
Is that you?
No.
You know, our, uh, Artie, I'll I'll only say that, you know. It's apparent that we have a lot of issues uh to be resolved prior to uh. Uh, any placement of a or replacement of a planning commission member. Um, you you said something about, we talked about something a couple of weeks or a week ago, whatever it was about about Harold. Yes, we did, but at that point in time, I told you that I didn't know anything about what you're talking about. Well, it wasn't until this evening in this, when I got did read all the emails, is when I did see what. What was transpiring, especially from from on Harold's point of view, so that's why I was shocked. Now, now you're trying to throw that back at me, I take exception to that.
Okay, well. It it actually, I, uh, Mark, I want to meet with you here this week because there's definitely things we gotta go through to fix these problems. For sure, uh, you being on on the planning commission meeting. I did not receive the email from Harold. I am a a member of on the board of trustees and I serve as supervisor. I'm a trustee like everybody else is on the board. I was not privy to any email from Harold, and actually, Chris, I didn't get your attachments, you said there was attachment. On your email, I didn't have an attachment, so I don't know what was in your attachments. If you could resend that to me, maybe. Um.
It was a fifty page attachment, Artie.
Okay, I did not receive it. I just got.
It was a Google document, it it's on our side, it's hard to find, but it's. It's got some kind of logo, it's a Google document, it was an email, but it's I I'm it's kind of hidden somehow.
Okay, I didn't I didn't get it, all I do, it was an email with the meeting dates or something.
It says attachment.
So anyhow, maybe Christie, if you could, uh, print that out for me. Is there any more discussions or questions uh from our board members before I call vote? Hearing none, uh. Roll call vote, and again, the vote is to approve Debbie Addy. As a member of the planning commission.
Joanne Sherkey?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
abstain.
You can't.
Can't tell me what to do, abstain.
So, go ahead.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes, Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
No.
The motion, the motion passes. Uh, next, uh, seven B, we have a plan commission appointment to reappoint Mark Burchard. Uh, as board representative. Through eleven fifteen, twenty twenty four to the planning commission. Entertained a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of planning commission, uh, board representative Mark Burchard with his term ending eleven fifteen, twenty twenty three.
Support.
Motion to support, any discussion on that?
Is that is that date right, twenty twenty three?
Hmm, I thought it was twenty twenty four.
Okay.
It should be uh till eleven fifteen, twenty twenty four.
Four years.
Yep.
Oh, just tacked on another year, sorry, Mark, through uh twenty twenty four.
Okay. I got it.
The planning commission appointments are three years, so I wasn't even thinking our term is four.
Right. All right, any uh discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No one opposed, okay, motion carries. Uh, next we have zoning board of appeals appointment, Joanne Sherkey is board representative. Through eleven fifteen of twenty twenty four.
Also make a motion to approve the reappointment of zoning board of appeals, board representative Joanne Sherkey with term ending eleven fifteen of twenty twenty four.
Okay, a motion and support, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone, anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, next, uh, seventy, we have a presentation and discussion, uh. And we have Anthony from project control engineering. Uh, he's going to tell us about Silver Smith Asset Management and. And waterware saw software, yeah, upgrade on the Saw grant. Anthony, are you on?
Yes, I'm I'm on, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, take it away, and I, did you give my, uh, I signed the form for on the third draw for like ninety nine thousand dollars?
Yes, I got that, and I'll get that submitted tomorrow to Eagle, so.
Okay.
Supervisor Bryson, before he starts, can you make sure everybody's muted so we don't get distracted?
Yep, thank you, I will do that.
Now I have, uh.
Well, you'll have to unmute them.
Anthony, unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
And now. Before I get him, before I get him going on the presentation, I'll just briefly run through the uh. Um, uh, progress uh report for the Saw, so that way it kind of leads into what he's here for. So, um, where we're at in the in the inventory, so we have different categories in the Saw, in in the inventory category. Where we inventory all the assets in the sanitary system. Uh, we're almost at a hundred percent um at this point, so. Um, we've had some good weather, um, and so I'm thinking that in in a matter of weeks. Uh, we should be able to be at a hundred percent. And so that those assets need to be put in, they they get created into the GIS system. Which is then used as the framework or the or the architectural background for the uh. Um, the software architecture for Silver Smith, which is our asset management software, so. Um, the asset management software is the is the user interface between the DPW staff. Um, engineering, everybody that wants to uh see different information in the um. In the system, uh, that's the point where they can enter in and and see that, they can also uh. Uh, add data to different assets, uh, such as if there's a photograph or a repair, uh, like what we did in Butterfield. Um, all that documentation can now get stored in that database for that asset that we repaired. And so when we want to come back and see maybe something that we've done in the past, we've got an easy place to go, and we can access that. From our phone, smartphones, from our computers, from from whichever. There's a username and password that's assigned to each member, and then there's levels of access that we can give as well. So that's kind of the the background of the software he's going to present. Other than that, there is an additional software, which I, what I'd like to do is to propose demonstration for that one with staff members that are working on the rates. And that's called Waterworth, or they're now calling it Muniworth because it's for water, sewer, roads. And I just want to propose that that the next step for that one would be a future demonstration. We don't have enough time to do a bunch of demonstrations today. But that I would maybe propose that for next time or next time around. But maybe we do a little mini one with DPW, maybe some of the people in accounting administration, people involved with the rates can get in on that one first, and then we'll bring it to the board. So that's that's basically the introduction. So we're kind of ready to move forward with with an asset management software. I will just say lastly that the Saw grant covers the the purchase price of the, it's a grant eligible item. Obviously, we're a 10% match. We're also in line for the DWM grants. We're waiting to see if we'll be awarded them in March. If we're awarded DWM, that's 100%. So there's a zero, there's zero out of pocket for the township, and also the software is eligible in that grant program. We can purchase it. All grant expenditures for DWM, for example, go back to October of last year. And then, of course, the Saw, everything that we're doing now is is in the is in the window for reimbursements. So either way, we'll be able to determine that, and it'll probably fall into the next draw request I do. We'll be able to know where we stand with DWM and which one we're going to apply this to.
So so it would behoove us, the Clay Township, if we waited and can do, buy the software packages under DWM as opposed to the Saw?
Well, if, let's say, if we get DWM, we can apply them to DWM and get reimbursed in DWM. If we don't get DWM, we can get reimbursed in Saw for 90%. Either way, we're covered in terms of at least 90% coverage, if not 100. It's just event, both right now expenditures that you make right now can be applied to either grant. It's just like Saw was back to 2013 in the expenditures. DWM, the October of 2020.
Okay, do we have costs associated to these software packages yet?
Well, for the for the Silver Smith package, I believe I sent you a proposal. We could probably unmute Ray, and he probably has that up.
Ah, Ray, Ray, Ray.
Yes, it's it's the total cost would be 8350. That includes the GPS unit and one tablet.
8,350?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Artie, can I interrupt? Hey, can you go into that cost a little bit? Is that a one-time fee or is that annual?
Yeah, so that that cost would be, I can break it down for you. The initial setup would be $3,000.
Yep.
Annual annual fee would be 1750. That's for the software, the upgrades and 24/7 support. The GPS unit with tablet is 3,000. And then the tablet reoccurring, which includes unlimited data each year, would be 600. So the total cost would be 8350, and then the annual reoccurring cost would be 2350.
And if we buy, if we go ahead and buy this, are we locked in the reoccurring cost for X amount of years?
No, sir, it's a one-year sign up, and then each year you'll you'll get the reoccurings. But no, there's no no long-term sign up.
Okay.
Most often what happens is once the workers and the clerks start using it, they they have ideas and they, you'll have a direct line to our software engineers right there in Gaylord, Michigan. And, you know, the whole system was actually built on ideas from managers, clerks, fire departments, police, and water workers. And so usually, within a few weeks, you maybe have an idea, and then we incorporate it. And there is no extra cost for that. If there's something that we're missing and you would like it in the township, please let us know.
Okay. And you said you can give us a demonstration on this at some point in time, or?
I can do it right now if you'd like, if I can share the screen.
Yeah, yeah, let me share it.
Hey, Artie, is that in the budget? Have anything in the budget for that?
It's in the, under the Saw grant budget, the $1.1 million grant.
Okay, and have any alternatives, alternates?
Um, I haven't yet, but this is what our engineer is is recommending, and I assume that that Anthony.
Yeah, and and really, most, all these softwares have have quite a lot of similarities. We found that that the Silver Smith software was the least expensive on the market. We looked at Empower and some of the other softwares that are out there, other communities we work with are using, and and they were more expensive. They had a couple more features that you could say you're getting with the additional costs, but maybe those things weren't really that needed for us. I mean, we kind of really want to have all our utilities to be able to access it. What it does is it allows the water department and the water fund and the sewer fund to share in that the annual subscription that's 2,300. So that really gets divided between between two funds, so that that reduces it even more versus, you know, so those were, those are the things we saw. Just that it's cost, it's the cost competitive option, if you compare all the proposals out there, so.
Okay, great.
Okay, can you see my screen?
We can. I can.
Okay, great. Well, my name is Ray Cook with Silver Smith, and I, and Silver Smith is headquarters in Gaylord, Michigan. And when we were building the system, one thing that we wanted was user-friendly. So we've created a very user-friendly software. And we've incorporated a lot of communities and the voices, so the fire departments, the water, like I say, and even parks and rec. And you'll see with our software, you can have unlimited users, unlimited layers, and it's a web-based program. And you will be, everything is time stamped, and it shows who's done the work, and I'll show you. So here would be your layout of your fire hydrants, and the red ones indicate that they're out of service. So what's nice about this software also is as the DPW worker takes a hydrant out of service, it notifies the fire department, fire chief, that this hydrant is out of service and this one's out of service. It sends them a text alert email, lets them know they can be signed up. I mean, we can set them up on a read-only, so they don't change any of the data, but they'll know exactly what's going on with the hydrants. Slight maintenance needed is yellow, maybe that those have to be painted in 2022, and then the green circle indicates that they're ready to go. The last recorded gallons per minute are above it. And to get into any asset, you would just simply hover over it and then select maintenance view. And then that's going to take you into that log for that particular hydrant. It's very easy to use. You got the hydrant ID, year, make, the model, the main size. Down here, you can see who's done the work and what time and any work. You can incorporate as many pictures as you want, so it kind of shows you the condition. Down here, you can see it's out of service, but it also wins the last time that hydrant's been flushed or any kind of work that's been done on that hydrant. The bonnet, the barrel, and what we've done is we've made these simple dropdowns. You know, I know the field workers, they're busy, they got a lot to do, and, you know, you want to document all this work that's being done. It's just a simple dropdown from your cell phone or tablet, all the way down to your work order systems. You can create work orders, and it's one button to update. And here's your hydraulic data. You can put that in there. To go back to the main screen, you can hit this. If I'm not looking at hydrants right now and I want to go to curb boxes, meter pits, you would just simply select what you want. And then I can show you what the, what most customers are doing is when they go mark, or let's say Anthony's already marked these, you can go back out and you take this picture, and you can take multiple pictures, and that lines it up real nice where that shut off is. So come winter time, you're going to save a tremendous amount of time going out there to shut the, you know, the person off or any kind of emergency. Also, if you're your sewer, so sanitary manholes, manholes, you can see the condition, see what's going on with them. And I can jump back into this, and here's my, those are all curb boxes. The black circle indicates there, you know, shut off, non-payment, yellow, scheduled maintenance, and the purple is seasonal. To get into any curb box, you just simply hover over it. It's the same repetitive. You know, you just select the maintenance view. It's repetitive. It's very nice, easy. With this, you're going to get the the owner's name, address, when's the last time it's been turned, and, you know, what type of meter is it? Census Rockwell. On top of that, we are keeping up with, you know, the valve turning program that Eagle requires, the flushing program. And now with the service lines, the lead service lines. So we've talked to, again, municipalities and how they wanted this this set up. And they said, you know, go from the main to the stop, and then from the stop to the property. Well, now they have to go into the residence. So here you can see you got main to stop, and it's a simple dropdown. Hopefully, you don't have the lead, but there, you can select what it is, keep track of it. Your service line size, and then from the stop to the property. And now, just recently, we added basement, so you can actually keep track of all this. You can scroll down, when when's the last time the valve's been turned? If it's been turned, if you got a five-by-seven card or four-by-six card, you know, you can simply take a snapshot of that, any kind of data, we can bring that in, and then you can customize your pictures, too. And again, it's unlimited assets, so you can turn on your valve layer, and it's the same same setup. I can incorporate the garages, too. So here I can include my garages. Here's a fire department. I'm going to click on it. I have a trailer in there. I have a couple of 250, a 150. Here's a fire truck. And again, this, this, these dropdowns actually came from one of our customers who's a, he's a DPW director, but also a fire chief. My interconnection's a little slow here, but he gave us a four-page spreadsheet, and then we incorporated that into the fire truck maintenance. And you can see it right here. It's got the year, the hours, the engine, the make, model. But this was his scheduled maintenance. You know, every every week they would go through this, and we just incorporate it. If one customer wants it, we'll bring it into everybody else, because most likely what one fire department wants, you know, it's it's pretty similar. But we can customize these dropdowns if you want. But this covers, you know, the air tanks, the mirrors, the lights. You can see the the reason why the garage is red is because this fire truck is out of service because of the transmission. Keep track of the oil, the battery, the filters, all the way down, flares. And you can schedule this maintenance out, too. So if you'd like to schedule maintenance, you just simply come over here, you add your scheduler, and then you can assign it. It'll even remind you if something is due, maybe an engine or a pump station has to be, you know, greased or oiled. You can do that. You can also include your blight properties on here. So if you have a blight issue, it could be right here. You can keep track of that. You know, I was there 30 days ago. You had the car on blocks, and now, you know, it looks like you even added more stuff to it. So you can keep track of the blight properties. Trees. Here's another one. I mean, it's there if you'd like to use it. Not all communities are marking their trees, but several are. Like this here, you can see a storm. Let me get down to it. You can, you can see a storm came through. There's two red ones in this ball field. I can click on this red tree. I'm going to hit the maintenance view. And then from there, it's going to take you right back into that maintenance log. It says it's a maple. It was planted in 1970. You can put any notes you want, but even time stamped on this picture when that storm came through. I can go down to, you know, I hope you never have them, but I know every community does, but you can keep track of your main breaks. So while you're out there, you know, shoot these main breaks, then you know where your main breaks were in your township. And it's the same thing. You would just simply hover over it, hit the maintenance view. From there, it takes you into that main break. It's the misdig number, the time on, time off, main size, the depth, the samples taken, sleeves used, even all the way down to your cold patch asphalt. You can come over here. So this is just kind of an example of any town. It's your water towers, pump stations, survey points, even your water mains. You can click on your water mains, and then you have the same setup. You would just click on it, and then your water main information, meter pits. Down to, we have communities putting their street signs, railroad signs, when's that reflective? How good is it? How long has it been there? So here you can see we have one on the street corner here, railroad sign. I'm going to click on it, hit the maintenance view.
Hey, Ray, how does all this get populated?
Uh, there's.
Data.
Yeah, there's a couple ways now. You know, since you've worked with Anthony, he's shot all this information, a lot of it. And we will bring all that data in, and there is no extra charge for that. So whatever Anthony has shot or or will shoot down the road, you know, if 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 there's maybe an expansion or something, we will bring that data in at no cost. So all of that gets populated, whatever Anthony's brought in. But meanwhile, let's say a main break happens, and you want to shoot it, the GPS unit is available. You'd go out there. We have 24/7 support. You have a chat button in the bottom, plus you'll have a direct line to our software engineers, plus myself. And then unlimited training, so we'll come out onsite and show you how to use the GPS, show everybody how to log in, get everybody set up. So maybe, maybe, go ahead, Anthony.
I'll just add there that when he's referring to the GPS, he's actually, this proposal he has includes a physical handheld GPS. It's a small device like this that they give, that will give to the township. So the the DPW staff will have access to that at any time. So even if our survey crew is not able to get out there, or it's something that DPW wants to do themselves, they have ability to do that, and it uploads immediately into the Silver Smith cloud. So there's no real data processing time involved. It's all direct uplink.
And the data, the data stays in in Silver Smith cloud, or is it, does it reside at a server or something at the township?
Yeah, so our, the data goes to a server, and then it's backed up on the cloud, and then on a daily basis, it's backed up into a deposit box. So none of the, I mean, none of these pictures, none of this data is going to tie up, you know, your your space on any of your devices.
So maintain on the iPad, I guess?
Yeah, you can use any any device, iPad or Android, cell phone, tablet, or desktop.
Okay, so it's, it's the data stored in Silver Smith's cloud, to answer your question, and we'll have a backup that we'll periodically do in case any, you know, as a as a secondary precaution, and that is also our data, the township data, you know. But but immediate access is always straight to the cloud of Silver Smith, so we're not worried about maintaining any servers or anything. That'll be all on them.
Yes, that's part of that. Yes, that's part of that, uh, reoccurring fee.
Okay, seventeen fifty.
Yes, sir. And that includes the, uh, six hundred out of, out of that would be the data for the. A tablet that's, uh, that works hand in hand with the GPS unit. No, it's, it's a web-based program. There's no app. So you, you, you could have unlimited users that you, you choose and give them access. Uh, it'd be a, a login with password.
How, how many users at a time can be logged in?
Uh, as many as you want. I think our biggest customers, uh, in Indiana with fifty-seven, uh, daily users.
I missed that. Did you say that was cloud-based?
Yes.
And, uh, okay. Hey, uh, just for a, for a minute, can you go back to the, uh, water mains and that, uh, that menu list?
Yes.
Uh, do you show, which, which one of these, uh, indicates the, uh, sexual control valves? Under water mains.
Uh, I think this is just our demo. Uh, I gotta see if it's. Anthony, did you shoot those?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
And just full screen, let me get out of that. Uh, so yeah, we shot them and, um, in like our, uh. GIS, you see them. And so they're an asset, an independent asset that you can click on.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, we don't have every, I mean, we cover a lot on this. I mean. We just brought in, uh, some data from another customer. There's two hundred, uh, two, this is just a brief example. Like this right here, uh, this fog program, this just got brought in a couple of weeks ago. Now that's fats, oils and greases. Uh, it's a new thing that's being required through some of the states, uh, but all your restaurants. Uh, you're going to be able to keep track of all that information. That just got brought in. All your cross connections, uh, it just, it just really depends. Uh, what, what the engineer firm has shot and Anthony has done that. So we, we'll bring that in. That information in.
Is John DeBoer on this meeting? I didn't see him.
I was going to ask the same thing.
Yeah, I'm here already.
Oh, okay. What do you think about this, John?
I think it'd be a great asset. I wish we would have had this about twenty years ago, to be honest with you. Um, I know Anthony's GIS or PC's GIS, a lot of this stuff already. It's going to, um, eliminate a lot of manual work that we do now. Um, and it's going to help people out in the future. And I think it's something that George might be interested in utilizing also.
I would, uh, I would think so. Is George still on? I mean, fire hydrants specifically.
Well, they're owned by the wire department though.
Yeah, but the communication between the two departments and in regards to the, the status of the hydrants would be pretty beneficial.
Right.
And I can also say that our, our annual reports that we do to the state of Michigan. This would be very useful also, th- this data.
Yeah, it's, it's something that helps us meet the state requirements, um, because, uh, when we're doing recording and we're, we're talking with. We've had this situation actually where we're doing, uh, dealing with, uh, enfor- enforcement or anything like that. When we mentioned that we have, we're using an asset management software. Uh, it immediately, uh, lets the, the people at Eagle know that we're on top of things because it's something that they're, they're promoting us to do. And, you know, pick one or pick what works for our, our individual needs, um, but that we have that, that one point. Uh, location where we can go and get the information quick and then we can also share it with them quickly.
Right. So, so this here is the railroad sign. It's red. You can see if you click on the image, it's timestamped. There's bullet holes in it. That needs to be repaired, um, and right down just needs to be replaced. Uh, somebody brought up fire hydrants. I wanted to show you, uh, just. Let me click these off. One of our, uh, customers in Grand Rapids area, uh, Plainfield Charter Township, one of their directors asked us. They have roughly, uh, two thousand, twenty-five hundred hydrants. And you know, during the flushing program, they can pull a report, but, uh, Matt wanted the ability to pull up a map. Of their hydrants, just like this, but you know, quite, quite a bit more. Go up here. And he said, you know, come up with a solution where I can just pull up the maps and I know which, where my crew is and which ones have been done. So this is what we came up with. And again, everybody benefits from this now, uh, but you can come up here, you can hit the hydrant has been flushed. And when you do that, it's going to take you into just the hydrants. And you can see up here, it's the same map, same hydrants, but the crew has finished these hydrants. These are all completed and been flushed. So as they come down and they hit yes, you know, the dropdown that says yes, it's been flushed. It's going to give you a timestamped, who done it? And it'll fade on the map. Likewise, with the valve turning program that, uh, Eagle requires. It'll be the same thing. As you say, yes, it's been turned, it'll fade on the map. So again, we're always getting ideas from our customers and, and we build it in the system, um.
And, um, I'll mention that, uh, obviously we're, each department's required to, uh, do locating. But you know, if you have a mystic locate, if you, uh, Ray, if you turn on the, uh, water lines and sewer lines. Um, so this is something that if somebody's being called out to do a mistig for water and sewer. Uh, you'll have, these are the water and sewer lines, um, that they'll be able to go and use to mark. Um, these, you know, in our case, all water and all sewer, uh, will have been shot in by our survey team. So with precision. So, um, this helps us to, uh, to get that done quickly, um, everybody having quick access to, um, to the data, you know?
Hey Anthony, does any other communities you work with, uh, per, use this, uh, software?
Right. So, so that's another reason that I, I favor this software because City of New Baltimore has implemented it and is using it. Uh, IRA Township is using it. They, they've just gotten started. Um, they're basically bringing in the data, um, at this point that was done during their saw. Uh, at that time, uh, I think it was still in a, in a phase of development, right, Ray? So, um, now, now we're fully, it's a fully developed, uh, program, right? It came on right when we were looking at something for New Baltimore. So New Baltimore adopted it. IRA is now retroactively adopting, adopting it in, uh, and I do believe Contra Ville is, uh, is doing the same. They, they were one of the first Saw Grant, uh, rounds. So sometimes there's negatives to being the first because, you know, the market then reacts with all these services and softwares. After a few years, so then you might not see those till you're done. So, um, so that's the communities that, you know. The majority of the communities, uh, we work with, um, are implemented, have implemented it, are implementing it or are planning on implementing it. So.
Yeah. Hey, I have another question. Uh, is this primarily for fixed assets?
Uh, well, we, no, we can also. Uh, we can also, so if I. If I'm, if I'm understanding you correctly, I mean, so you can hit the maintenance on this building and. You know, the building is there, but then also you could have vehicles in it. You can have, uh, backpack blowers. You can have, you know, your zero turn lawnmowers. Pretty much anything in the garage you can have.
But can, can, uh, on those, um, and I'll cut, do we have a mo- uh, availability for a mobile access, you know, like on a vehicle, like fire truck?
Like a tracking device or?
That's correct.
Yes. No, I don't, no, no, no tracking device.
That would be beneficial, I would think.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll look into that. Yep.
Thank you, thank you.
Cost is for the, you know, because I'm sure each, each vehicle would have a cost then, you know, to, to monitor that.
Um, I would say, uh, one way to achieve that would be through maybe some kind of hyperlink to whatever that tracking devices, uh, provider is. So if you have a tracking device, um, that's being provided by, uh, a certain company, you know, a vehicle safe or whatever. Then, um, we'd be able to put that hyperlink for that vehicle, let's say that F three fifty, um, in this, in this software. So then you would go to that vehicle, you'd click that hyperlink. It would take you to another window that would open up. That would have, that's proprietary and there's also some security features that are probably in play, um, for that. So there'd be a way for us to get there. It might just be one extra click.
Well, I know there's a, I know there's a lot of companies out there that are offering that with, uh, recent, uh, updates. So, yeah, I would, uh, like to see that.
I think our dispatch has capabilities for, uh, police and I think fire, but not water, you know, our water trucks. But, um, police and fire are covered under dispatch, I think, Mark.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're always looking at new creative ideas. I mean, uh, we do have one that, uh, for the fire hydrant. Uh, it would be the same as this asset management, uh, but the center of the hydrant would turn colors if somebody was stealing your water. So we have a sensor that goes down into the, the barrel and lets you know if, uh, let's say an eighteen wheeler comes across this corner and clips this hydrant. You're going to get a tamper alert or if, uh, you know, there's a leaky hydrant or somebody stealing it to prevent any frozen hydrants. But yeah, we're always, we're always looking for new ideas and that was actually one that we custom built and in-house right there in Gaylord, Michigan. Uh, but yeah, let's, let's look into that, uh, tracking.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we can, uh, you know, apply that to a lot of different, uh, uh, mobile assets. I'll call trailers and as you mentioned before, the. Zero turns, tractors, uh, bobcats, whatever the case may be. Put one on. I won't go there.
So, so as you can see, there's a lot of things that you could do. Um, it could get really extensive. Um, what we want to try to do is we've completed, um, about eighty-six thousand linear feet, I believe. Of sewer pipe inspection. And so each sewer pipe segment has its own, uh, pipe graphic report where it shows where each tap is. Um, along the line and, uh, any defects and, um. And then sometimes there's a photo report if it, there's a lot of defects. Um, so we want to have a good place to bring that in and deposit that. And so that's why, um, it just saves a whole lot of data processing time if we're able to, to get that brought into, um. To a software we're going to use and we'll still have our, our physical data, be it the electronic data at PCE or the, um. Um, then we'll, we do something called a pipeline reference manual, which is a hard copy book. Um, but most of the time the operators are going to jump right into this and see the information they need to see.
Hey, Ray, let me ask you a hypothetical question. We buy this and we go, we, uh. We, we go along for a couple of years. We pay the seventeen hundred and fifty dollars renewal, annual fee. Uh, say for a couple of years, then we, we want to cancel it. Say we go another two years without it and then we say to ourselves, how do we live without this? And we wanted to re-up it. Um. Number one, would it, would our data still be maintained, uh, available to us? I know no, no new changes would be when we're offline, but would our data, uh, be available there? And you know, what would, you know. Would, would we be able to, uh, uh, get it back?
Yeah, you, you own your day, data one hundred percent. So let's say, uh, after a year. Uh, you decide to go with a competitor, uh, you get, you know, we'll send it in a shape file, whatever file you want. And then you can bring it back into the system and, uh, five years from now, you decide, you know what, we're going to go back to Silver Smith. Uh, we'll bring in that data again.
Okay. And, uh, to, to get it going, it's, uh, eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, correct?
Yes, sir.
For, for, what's the total for the one year, right?
Yes, and that includes the, the bulk of that. I mean, kind of is that, uh, GPS unit with the tablet.
Right, that was three thousand.
Yeah.
Have to define users too and how many users we want right away or?
Yeah, what we'll do is our customer support will send, um, a, a list out and you'll define. Who you want on it and what access.
How many users can we have in that eighty-three hundred?
Unlimited.
Okay, yeah, you did say that. Okay.
Is there a lot of maintenance to the equipment and is that included if it breaks down or has to be replaced?
Yeah, so as you all probably know with water communities, directors retire, leave, go to the next community. Uh, you know, we, we, that happens some kind of often where, you know, somebody will retire or move on. And then, you know, we'll come back out and train. That's included. Uh, you have a direct line to our engineering department. And their, that little chat in the bottom, even if you purchase, let's say, you buy the GPS unit in one of our tablets. But then on a, a Black Friday deal, you go out and get your own tablets. We, our, our customer supports even helped, uh, with, you know, IT questions on, on a personal device. Uh, so yeah, that's included. It's always there twenty-four, seven. Just ask us any questions. Um, and again, we are right there in, uh, Gaylord, Michigan. We do cover several states and Canada. Uh, but yeah, we'll, we'll send somebody right, right to your location.
So, so your response time is what, four hours away?
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, it would be, I mean, not, not so much my response time, but we will have somebody, uh, right there. Uh, absolutely. Our closest, uh, engineer is probably Grayling. Uh, and then, well, either Grayling or Grand Rapids. I mean, we got somebody in Grand Rapids and Grayling, so there will be somebody there.
And you're good with this, John, aren't you?
Absolutely.
How many communities, how many communities do you serve in Michigan?
I think we're right around a hundred.
Okay. So anybody in southeast Michigan?
Yeah, I.
What was just named?
Uh, French, Frenchtown Charter Township. I mean, that's, that's one there. Uh, I mean, I don't have, that's, I'm actually on the west side. I'm on the, uh. Uh, Grand Rapids side, but yeah, I can send you a list of references. That's not a problem.
Okay.
Does anyone have any more questions for Ray? Does anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, Artie, Artie, I have one more question for Ray. Um, Ray, maybe I missed it in the beginning of your presentation, but how, how long has Silver Smith been around?
Yeah, we've been around twenty some years. We started in the oil and gas industry. We have, uh, that's, that's where it, it started. It is, uh, family owned and, um. We started with, uh, PLC, uh, remote monitoring, a lot of custom work like that, uh, hopping channels. Uh, getting, you know, oil and gas wells communicating with no, uh, electricity out there. So that's kind of where we started. From there, then we went into the hydro alert, which is the monitoring system, uh. And that brought us into the water side of it. Uh, manufacturer came to us and, you know, tried to solve some of the problems with fire hydrants freezing. And so from there, we went out to Alpena Township and I. I spoke with them and spoke with several other communities about asset management up into the, uh, upper peninsula. And that's where we started. So, uh, roughly twenty years. Um, and we are in, I think, seven states now plus Canada.
Thanks, Ray.
Yes, sir.
I guess solvency would be a made consideration, uh, you know, some of the other, uh, equipment that we have, you know, Motorola and some of the other, uh. Name brands, some of those guys went out of business and we got stuck with the, uh, package that, uh, was absolutely no use to us. So I guess, or at least I would be interested in your solvency.
Yeah, actually, uh, uh, that's hap- that, you know, it was about ten years ago that happened quite, you know, a little bit where we've walked in. And, uh, you know, a cus- company went out of business and maybe they gave you a thirty day. Hey, if you want your data, you have thirty days to retrieve it. If not, it's lost. Uh, again, if you sign up with us, uh, we can, I mean. To, Anthony will have your data plus we'll have it, uh. Tomorrow, if you sign up and the next day you say, uh, competitor comes in, it's yours. You, you own your data. There's.
Okay, but you guys aren't going away anytime soon anyways.
Uh, I hope not, because I'm out of a job, but yeah, no, uh, no, twenty years, we're expanding. Actually, we're expanding right now in Iowa. We just, uh, picked up six new customers there and Minnesota. So, uh, our goal is to cover the whole United States and the reference list that I can send you. Uh, you know, these directors and superintendents and managers, uh, they'll speak very, very highly of Silver Smith. And just, uh, like Lake Charter. And just uh, like Lake Charter Township just did us a little ninety-second uh, commercial that's gonna be, you know, aired and with that, he said, you know, how many companies out there, you have a direct line to a software engineer? I mean, and you can speak to them and there's no, there's no charge. There's no charge, you know?
What is your renewal rate? Of your current clients? Renewal rate of your current clients?
Uh, about ninety-nine percent.
Big volumes.
Yep. Yeah, that's why I think it was Artie who brought up uh, you know, about how long do I have to, how long do I have my, my information? And if I leave you, what's, what's the process? And I, I kid you not, most of the time you get the software and I'm getting a phone call by, you know, either the field worker or, or somebody else, hey, this is a great idea. For instance, I, uh, one of our customers over on the water side, or you know, over by uh, Lake Michigan. They have these cottages there that, you know, get closed in during the winter and they fly down to Florida. And he says, okay, we have closed and non-payment, but we would like to know seasonal. So he sent the request in and we put it in for everyone who wants it. But now he can actually sit, I mean, go on his map and see that everybody's closed in for winter, everybody, you know, so. And that's that little purple ring around your curb, curb stopper meter pit. So that was one of their ideas. And then Plainfield Charter Township in uh, Grand Rapids was the flushing program. Um, yeah, it's, it's built by the people. It really is. I mean, it's, the whole software package was built by the people.
Hey, is there a trial period or we're just uh, this is it?
I, I can uh, uh, give you in any town USA access. Um, or uh, I mean, if you really want it, I guess we could bring in some of that data. I have done that for customers in the past. Uh, you know, maybe some of the, the shots that Anthony took and give you a, a test run.
Okay, hey, well, let me ask John. John, have you been involved in this uh, all along with uh, identifying the uh, data points?
Um, not as far as identifying the data points. That's something we probably get into once it became ours. But I've had discussions with Anthony, um, you know, in regards to what this software does and how it would be beneficial to us.
Mm-hmm. Have you had any type, have you had any type of user uh, involvement? Operating it or somebody else's or whatever?
No, I haven't, not yet.
Okay.
And I'm sure we could ask, um, for example, New Baltimore. Uh, we know people who work at New Baltimore that uh, we could say, hey, can we take a look at your built-out system? And uh, just see how that works. And uh, John and I can do that um, pretty quickly. Uh, and that gives you kind of like an idea of the actual way it will look, our syst- our setup will look. Um, and um, you know, give you someplace familiar as well.
I think that'd be very beneficial for that. Hey, Artie, I can make a motion pending uh, uh, user uh, test or whatever. What do you think?
Make, make the motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to uh, approve the Silver Smith Asset Management. Uh, is that Silver Smith Asset Management? Waterworth Worth or is that something else?
Uh, A S T, Asset Status Tracker.
Yeah, well, I'll just read the whole thing. Silver Smith Asset Management, uh, Waterworth uh, software. With a, with a condit- with the condition of uh, uh, the water department supervisor uh, reviewing and testing the uh, software.
Can I, at a cost of eighty-three, eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars?
Eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Hey, Artie, just a reminder that we're, worst case scenario, we're looking at ninety percent reimbursement on that cost.
Right, I was gonna ask Mark to edit his um, amendment to also include if we are uh, successful in our D W A M uh, grant, that would be applied to that. Which we're going to probably hear in about six weeks. Uh, and if not, it would be applied to the remaining of our one point one million dollar Saw Grant that we obtained.
Yep, I'll include that in the motion.
Or, okay, so we have a motion to purchase uh, the Silver Smith Asset Management Program for eighty-three uh, fi- eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, pending uh, the water department supervisor uh, uh, this uh, gives a, gives it a nod after a trial run uh, with New Baltimore's. And it'll be applied to the D W A M uh, grant if awarded. And if not, it would be applied to the Saw Grant. Does that sound good, Mark?
That's it.
Okay, does everyone understand it? And does there, anybody have any more questions? No, hearing none, uh, all in favor of uh, the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thanks a lot, Anthony and Ray.
Thank you, have a good evening.
And I'm sure we'll be talking to you soon. And uh, if you may get down here, give me a call. We'll, we'll check it out ourselves, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, Anthony, are you done? Do you have anything uh, more?
I don't think so. I tried to be brief, uh, just to lead up to uh, Ray's. Um, given the uh, uh, the, the length of the demo, I didn't wanna uh, add too much to this agenda. So next time I'll discuss um, some of our rate methodology stuff that we have in mind.
All right, thank you. All right, on the agenda, we have board member comments. Cindy Valentine, do you have a?
I do. Um, I wanted to thank Ray and Anthony. Um, the presentation I thought was great. I would have really loved to have seen it in person, but it'll definitely suffice. Um, I also want to mention that um, at this point in time, I received no emails. Um, however, obviously I'm out of town. Um, so they were obviously sent out after Friday. Um, but I, they obviously did not get to me. Um, but in addition, no one reached out to me either. I heard, I've heard from absolutely no one. Um, even anyone on the board about it. So that being said, I am confident Miss Addie. Um, and I would like to welcome her to the planning commission. And I also want to thank uh, Mark and Joanne for accepting their reappointment as board representative for this term for our team. That's all I got.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, Kristy, do you have anything?
I just wanna say welcome to Debbie Addie. And I did receive Christine and Kathy's emails, but I haven't received anything else that I'm aware of.
Okay, Maureen?
Well, I just wanna say thank you to you, Artie, for supplying all that grant information in the beginning of the meeting. I think that's gonna be really helpful for a lot of business. And um, I wanna welcome Debbie Addie too. And you know, I'm kinda, I had to speak for the people. Um, as far as Harold, I think he was a very hard worker and I'm sure, you know, he'll be missed. But Debbie Addie will share many gifts with us. And happy Martin Luther King Day and have safe travels and hope everything's going well out in Florida, Cindy.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Yeah, I was, I was muted right after the fire department's uh, presentation. But I'd like to thank uh, the fire chief for the incident reports that he continues to give us on a monthly basis. It's uh, beneficial to me anyways. Um, I wanna, I'm, the presentation for the Silver Smith Assets, I'm looking forward to that. It sounds like a great uh, great system. Um, be looking forward to a meeting with you next week, uh, anytime, Artie, or this week basically, so we can get some things hashed out. Uh, we've had a lot of things discussed today and I hope everything starts to settle down. Okay, this isn't where we should be as a, as a board, period. Whether it's the planning commission or, or the trust, board of trustees. Uh, Debbie Addie, I'd like to welcome you to the planning commission, although I didn't vote. Uh, and that was just out of uh, principle, but I look forward to having you on the board. Thank you.
Okay, Joanne?
You're muted.
Joanne, hit the mute button in the lower left. Hang on one second.
Or hit the space bar.
Where do I, do I see her? I'm uh,
Give me that, give me that.
There we go. Um, an awful lot of information for this meeting, lot to discuss, lot to ponder. Um, very informative in many ways and uh, I'd like to uh, welcome Debbie Addie to the uh, planning commission also. And uh, that's about it for now.
All right, thank you. Chris?
Yeah, Artie, um, I'll be praying for a peaceful transition of power on Wednesday. God bless the residents of Plain Township.
Appreciate that, thank you. I'd just like to, to say, you know, um, my job would be a whole lot easier if I just reappointed whoever and not do what I think is best for the township. Um, I, I've gotten a lot of feedback from fellow board members on on uh, issues with the planning commission. I got feedback from residents, business owners, developers, engineers, that people that deal with the planning commission. And, and there, there, there's definitely things that there, there, there's room for improvement in, in my eyes and then quite a few people that, that's dealt with it in the past. And it's my job to, to try to facilitate some way to fix that. And that's what we're gonna attempt to do. Um, I don't, and my board members probably contest, I'm not one for kicking the can down the street. Uh, never done that, never will. Uh, although uh, predecessors of mine have and it, it's really easy to do. But uh, other than that, happy Martin Luther King uh, Day. And yes, I'm praying for uh, a, a safe uh, transfer of power Wednesday. And uh, let cool minds prevail and uh, and peace for everybody. Thank you. I got one more uh, one more amendment for uh,
Motion to adjourn.
Support, support.
Aye. Favor. Aye. Aye. All right, thanks, everybody. Have a good couple of weeks.